I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone. It's a beautiful hot spring day. Let's move. I've heard the minutes of the May 21st, 2019, ready for me. Have a motion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Curry? Is that in the audience today?
Yes.
Okay. And we'll let the record show at this point, Mr. Baker and Ms. Smith aren't here. We'll leave the door open in case they should arrive or if you can hear from them. Now's our period of public comments and I don't think, no one signed in had to raise.
No sir.
Okay, so we're heading, no one signed in to speak to the board seat this afternoon. Okay, we're gonna go to the presentations and reports. Ray Ellis, Finance Director, graduate, all around finance guy, gonna talk about the 2020 budget. Ray?
Okay. Everybody's got a budget map, a budget book that...
Hey Ray, before we get started, I'm sorry, you unplug that ice machine, please.
I can just plug over top though.
Nah, we like very, very distinct.
In front of you, you've got the budget, the whole entire budget, list of revenues and expenditures and all that stuff. You can take, I didn't staple them. You wanna take it apart and do whatever you want or move this however you want. I tried to move everybody's to the top left. I'm in a stapler. I'm too cheap to buy a stapler, it'll go through all that, so. You can pick that apart where you see fit. But there's a lot of information and I'll go over some of that. But you also have this in front of you, which is Lincoln County Board of Education Budget Overview. And I highlighted some stuff. Now, with this budget, I kinda took a different route to get it finished as I've done. It was a little bit different than the last couple of years. And the last couple of years, I stressed and stressed and stressed and stressed and stressed and it was really difficult to make the budget balance. The first year, I needed, I think, 1.174 million dollars to balance it. It was my first year doing it. I don't know how many hours I spent on it. I stressed over that, had to cut, cut, finally I couldn't cut, so I had to use a carryover amount to balance the budget. And the state didn't like the way I did that. They didn't like that I had to use 1.1 million dollars. So last year, I get down to the final few days and I had 167,000 dollars more revenue than I did expenditures. So Jeff and I had a lot of conversations over the weekend...
Go ahead, Ray.
...on what I was supposed to do with that extra 167,000 because I matched all my revenues to expenses. And I just cut where, you know, transportation and maintenance, everywhere I could cut, I cut, I cut, I cut. Anyways, I took that 167,000, I stuck it, I think, back in transportation and maintenance, didn't use any carryover. So when all was said and done, they told me, they said, "Listen, Ray, you need to use 2 million dollars for a carryover amount." I said, "No, I don't, I balanced, I'm perfectly fine." They said, "No, you don't understand. You're gonna have 2 million dollars carryover, you might as well go ahead and put it in the budget." I said, "Well, I had 2 million dollars carryover this year and last year I used a million one, you thought I would've killed somebody because of the way y'all acted, you didn't want me to do it, now I don't need it and you tell me I gotta have it." So with that, this has been pretty much a stress-free budget because I realized no matter what I do, they're gonna want me to change something. So, at least that was my thinking, but when I got to the end of it, I think I've taken care of all of it to where they're not gonna ask me to do that. What I did this year is I used a lot of the numbers from last year as far as the expenses because nothing really changed. I think I cut some fuel costs and things like that simply because we're not spending as much on diesel, but we're spending a little bit more on gas. So things like that were adjusted. Of course, the state wants you to adjust your PGI credits, your retirement numbers, the credits that they give you, that I always say is monopoly money, it's not real money because I'm just gonna wipe it out in the end with their credit. So, but you gotta show it on the budget. So what I did was I got everything ready, I used 2 million dollars and I went ahead and I put it in the carryover amount. It's like revenue. I said, "Well, that's what they wanted me to use last year, I'm gonna use it this year." So, and I went through and I did all my expenses and I needed, I think, 291,000 dollars to balance the budget. So I talked to Mr. Minkiff and I talked to the Department of Ed, told him what I had done with the 2 million dollars and I said, "Do I really need to go and cut 291,000 dollars out of maintenance and transportation? Or can I just use the carryover amount to balance the budget?" So I had like a million seven something that I put in contingencies, which is about 6%. So we just went ahead and we did that. We put a million seven in contingencies and I used nearly 300,000 of that carryover amount to balance the budget. I could've done it without any of that, but in the end, the state was gonna look at that and they were gonna say it was fine either way, so I wasn't gonna spend another 10 hours trying to do that. So it made sense to me, you know, especially Mr. Minkiff was okay with it. And Uriah coming to his mind, contacted the State Department, he was okay with it. So we did that. And I hope everybody here is okay with that. But anyways, we got 6% in contingencies and everything else pretty much stayed the same. For Fund 11, if you wanna follow through on the budget overview, the total revenue for Fund 11 is 36,175,000 dollars and some, 750, what's it, 36,175,751. That is a combination of state aid, it's a combination of county money, other state programs, it all adds up. You put it in, you don't realize it's that much and by the time you're done, it's 36 million dollars. And I just explained to you about the beginning fund balance. The regular expense levy revenue is budgeted this year, or the coming year, 2.665 million dollars. That's down about 56,000 dollars from what we were expecting, you know, whenever you look at the assessors' numbers from the year before to this year. The state makes up about 90% of that, which is about 50,000 dollars, and that'll go into the finalized PSSD, which is the Public School Support Program, what's the state aid. They'll add that in there. I just had a conversation with Uriah maybe a couple hours ago, just to make sure that it went this year instead of next year. Because in my head, I was thinking they made that up the following year, but it's actually in this coming year. The excess levy, I've got budgeted at 3.217 million, which is 68,000 dollars down from what the voters just passed in November for our excess levy. So we had a conversation, Mr. Minkiff and I, and what I did with that, and you can see it on the last page of this, I attached a worksheet that I do that lists what the excess levy's supposed to be and if we had to add or subtract it, those individual categories and what the totals are. So you can see in red under deductions what I did. I had 68,000 dollars difference I had to account for, so the big thing is on major improvements, where we just gave them that extra 50,000 dollars because we were planning on doing the floors and such. I had to take that away because I think we're okay going forward to next year. We've already got the floor at Gown Valley, we've got that encumbered, we're, you know, we've got all that planned out and we're still in the positive, so we're gonna be okay there. So I thought that we'd just go ahead and take that out and then I hit maintenance of 10,000 and transportation with 8,100 and I always take from maintenance and transportation and I tell them, "If we need anything, if you run out of money, you zero your budget, you know, you have zero money left, we'll find your money if you gotta have something." So that always seems to be an easy way. But this year, I only hit them for 18,000 dollars total. Normally, in the past couple of years, the difference has been quite large, like maybe, I think, one year's 233,000 dollars and we took a lot from maintenance and transportation. And when I went back to balance the budget in previous years, I always cut. This year, I just didn't do that. I just didn't see the need for it because I didn't think the state was gonna correct me on anything. I think I'm fine with what I did. So there was 68,000 dollar difference and you can see that on the worksheet that's attached. The state aid formula, that stayed in Fund 11 was about 18, almost 18.1 million. This amount is larger than last year's and you would think with them saying we were so many over and our number of students, we lost more students, you know, so you're gonna get less money, you would think it would be lower, but it's increased because they gave us 790,000 dollars for the raises that they are expecting to happen, I guess, in the next month. When all this was brought up and they were having a special legislative session, we were given an email or sent an email and we had one to two ways to account for the raise. One way was just to put the expenses in like a contingency account and then if the raise happens, you would lower the contingency account for the amount of the raise, which was the easiest way to do it. Just in case that they didn't give the raise, then you really wouldn't have to do anything because you just put the money there, you leave it. I took the high road on this after talking to Uriah and Amy Willard at the State Department and I wanted to know what was the chances of us getting that raise and they said, "Well, it's greater than 85%." I said, "Well, I'll do the work now and not have to do it later." So what I did was change the salary schedules. I changed them and Trina and I entered them into the budget file and the raise was 2120 for every professional and this is projected by the Department of Ed, this is how they projected it. For each professional, it's 2120 and for each service personnel, it's 1150. So we went ahead and we increased all the salary schedules across the board and all the calculations in this budget, whether if you're looking at the fixed cost and things like that and the salaries, they all include that raise. There's things like, you know, fire counting and social security and things like that, they're gonna be a little bit more if you make more money. So all that's calculated in. Now, if it does not go through, you're gonna have probably about, I'd say 50 of the 55 treasurers probably did it this way, would be my thinking. You're gonna have 50 angry treasurers because now we gotta go back and change those salary schedules, back to just the regular state increments, which is not a big deal at all. So hopefully that raise is exactly as it is. If it's, if it's a little bit different, I don't think it's gonna matter, they're not gonna make us change it. But if we have to do any changes, it's gonna be after July 1st. They're not gonna have us change it this fiscal year, you know, before July 1st. So that's included, I thought you needed to know that. But anyways, after I did all that work, I called the state back because I hardly ever watched the news because I got three daughters, so we watch Nickelodeon, Disney and things like that. I have no clue, which relieves a lot of stress on me, actually. So somebody said, "Well, the legislators are doing this and doing this and my next-door neighbor's a delegate, so sometimes I hear him talking about things." And I was like, "Oh man, they're not gonna give that raise and I just did all this work." So I called Amy and she said, "Well, it's about a 75% chance." And I was like, "74% or lower, I wasn't gonna do the work, I was just gonna put it in a contingency." But I don't know, you all probably know better than I do if that raise is coming.
Ray, just one thing about that raise, that's comparable to last year's raise.
Yeah, it's really just the exact same, but you're, there's a little bit more, I think last year it was 2020 for professional and now it's 2120 because you got that raise, so that increased it by 100 dollars. And the same with, I think, service personnel is 1150 and now it's...
Hopefully everyone now understands when they hear this 5% raise, it doesn't necessarily mean that they are getting a 5% raise.
No, that's based off somebody making 44,000 dollars.
Right. Well, that's when last year, you know, a lot of people thought they were gonna get 5% whatever their salary was, but then they, you know, it came down to what the basic minimum was, I guess.
Somebody at the Department of Ed figured out that the average teacher makes 44,000 dollars and that's what they went with.
But many people were, "I didn't get my 5%. I only got this."
One county that I talked to, they, we do this unique, I don't know how many counties do this, but we use all three phases of WEVUS for finance, personnel and finance. They kinda communicate with each other and we use HMS for personnel, which goes into EMS, which is kinda like payroll, have personnel tied in. And then we bring it over into FMS, which is the finance module. And they all talk to each other, but you gotta do one before you do the other and then you do, finish that one and you pull it into FMS. And what Bill and Joanne do is they go through and they figure out every position that we're gonna have. Even if we think, if there's nobody in it, but we're gonna fill it, we put it in there. So you'll see vacant positions, but they'll, they'll put a minor, like a minimum salary in there. So not all counties do that. So we did that for all of our employees, but one county that did that was, they just said, "Okay, it's about a 2% increase." So they increased all their salaries by 2%. You can do that in a budget model. My 5% is not what he increased because he knew that for somebody that's been working for 20 years, it's not a 5% increase, it's more of a 3% increase. Somebody's been there 22 years, it's more of a 2% increase. So he figured it out, he just used 2% and I think everybody, their board was fine with it. But yeah, it's not 5%.
Well, those counties that are higher paying salaries, obviously 2% or 5% would be more for them, but it's gonna be based on the state, so that's in the tier now, right?
Yeah, it's coming from the state. What, that's, it's based on the state minimum, not with all the county supplements and everything.
You might be in Putnam County where the salaries are larger, great, that's gonna be in the tier, we're still gonna be...
It's gonna be 2% of that state minimum.
A 5% average raise.
Yeah, it's 2150 for professional and 1150 and that's just a little bit more than what it was last year. And everybody, you know, everybody will get it. So that's pretty much, on Fund 11, I think we reduced the number of full-time employees by five with the positions that we had, with, you know, things we didn't refill and such. So that's one way I can always tell when I, my budget number, last year I started over on the budget five times. I started over as late as May 15th on that budget because I didn't feel comfortable with the way personnel got pulled over. So this year, I pulled it over once, I looked at it and I realized that WEVUS gives you an error report. I didn't realize this the last two years. You get, right after it prints this report, it changes, it says, "Hey, this is what's wrong." I was like, "Well, I wish I would've known that existed last year." I started over five times. So I fixed the errors and I'd run it again, it'd list another error, I'd fix it, before long, I had no errors. So it only took one, one time to do...
It's okay. The way it was at the door up here.
So we had, one way you can tell it's right is by looking at full-time employees that are listed. You know, it's the number and you can run it for everybody and so when I looked at it this year, I worried last year because we cut some more than what we normally had, I guess, or we had a lot of retirements and the number was off and that worried me. This year, the numbers were four or five off and I knew what we had done in personnel season, so it was, it was right on. All I had to worry about from that point on was the expenditures. So I think overall and the whole scheme of things, we were down four. In Fund 11, we were down five and in Fund 61, we increased one. And what happens, and what we try to do, is we try to take any county employee and stick them in something where somebody's giving us money, whether it's the state, whether it's the federal government, or if somebody's got a program and they say, "Hey, you know, here's some money, you can do what you need to with it." Everybody's really good with that. I mean, that's the first thing, whenever we talk about hiring somebody, we've had, Jeff and Bill and I have had many discussions, "Well, where can we stick 'em?" So we've tried to manipulate stuff from the state, like this year with Step 7A, which is part of the Public School Support System Program, you know, that's part of the state aid formula that I have to separate and put into Fund 61. Well, they changed the rule last year that you can use up to 50% of Step 7A for personnel and we hadn't been doing that before. I think it was like 25% or something like that. Well, last year, they changed it and we agreed, "Say, hey, let's just keep what we're doing." Well, as soon as the school year started, we started moving people in there and we didn't, I think I said something, Jeff's better to ask for forgiveness than permission, so we just went ahead and did it. And nobody said anything about it. And this year, we went ahead and those people that we moved in there, we went from three aides and half of Sean's salary to all of Sean's salary and six aides. And we still had about 40,000 dollars to play with there and we just left it be. So I think the total that we could use was 347,000, maybe we used 328,000 of that. Well, that freed up plus to 200,000 dollars, I guess, in county money. And what that does is just help with your carryover amounts. You know, the more that you can take and put into a state or a federal program, it just saves us 200,000 dollars in carryover extra that we should have if we don't hire more people to eat that up. And everybody here's, when I first started, it was kind of a new philosophy because in Logan, you know, Logan, we had a lot of money, it wasn't really, you know, nobody really cared about that carryover because we had the money in the bank and that carryover was always high. Well, here, it was always different and it was a different mentality, it's like, "Well, I gotta hire somebody, but I don't have the money, where can we hide them?" And when you do that and, you know, Bills like it, Jeff's like it, Ricky's like it, Kirk's like it, everybody's trying to stick people into these programs that they have and it takes it away from county and it just helps out financially. So everybody does that really well. I mean, we always have that discussion, so if we hired somebody and it's in county, there was no place to hide them and to, you know, to get somebody else to pay for their salary. So you gotta commend all the directors and Jeff and Bill for that mentality and it's been like that ever since I've been here. And I am not one to change that mentality, so I think it's pretty good. Yeah, I try not to change a whole lot, so yeah, it seemed like a smart thing not to change. I talked to Ricky and Kirk who have most of the federal programs, Special Ed Title 1, Title 2, Title, what, 5, 6, I can't remember and then, I can't remember, I used to always know it as rural low income, but now I think he just refers to it as Title 4 or 5 or 6.
It used to be 6, not 5.
Anyways, when you budget 61, all 61 is, is all these restrictive projects and you really don't know how much you're gonna get. I know how much state aid I wanna get, as long as that raise is right and I already know how much state aid I wanna get. But with Fund 61, I think last year we got an increase in Title 1, we weren't expecting that, I don't think. It was quite an increase. It's really just a guess or they can have somebody at the State Department say, "Hey, listen, I think you're gonna get the same amount." So what Ricky and Kirk had told me was that they thought, they, I had them give me numbers of what they thought and Rhonda with her project with 21st Century. And everything's pretty much the same. I think Title 1 might've dropped just a little bit, but where we're getting so much, it's really, it's not a significant amount. But under this Fund 61, I listed different amounts of some of the programs. Special Ed, I think I put it in right back at the same amount, 21st Century, 200,000. Title 1, Title 2, I think was exactly the same. Those first four that's listed, Step 7A, 7D, 7D and then the bus purchase, the bus is part of Step, I think it's called Step 6C, it's just part of the state aid formula and they, it's a very complex formula that they use to give you how much money they're gonna, to let you know how much money they're gonna give you for buses. That went up about 25,000, I think it was 375, 378 last year, so over 20,000. Step 7A increased, Step 7B increased nearly 50,000 dollars and that is, that's another complex calculation based on, they look at the local share amounts for all the counties in the state and if that local share amount goes up, they realize that they have money free, so they start plugging it into different places in the state aid and Step 7B was one of them this year, so they gave us a big boost, even though our local share's going down in Mon County and Knott County and Cavill County, those are going way up, so we get, because everybody else was having really good success with their collections, we're getting an extra 50,000 for technology and that's what that is. Step 7D is for mentorships and that's something new and I cannot remember how they calculated that. Normally, three or four steps to that. And it has something to do with local share as well, but I can't remember exactly how they calculated that, but we didn't really know what it was. Bill and I have had many conversations. Bill's already got a plan for this 59,000, so we're putting a salary, a part of a salary in there, at least a contract, so, but it's there to help new teachers. Normally, they give us a grant at the end of the year to do this and now they're just giving us about five times more than we would normally receive with their grants, so they found extra money to try to make sure teachers trained correctly. Child nutrition, the budget's down, I don't know, plus to 200,000, a lot of that had to do with some of the costs of some of the foods associated with that program have, are dropping. And it might be simply because of the group of counties that get together and bid that out. I think they started a new one this past year and maybe that's saving some money. But I had a conversation just the other day with Tony Craga, who's, he's Assistant Director of Child Nutrition for the state and I talked to John, trying to at least show him how we come up with some of these numbers. And in talking to Tony, I was kinda stressing over some of these numbers I was using and he said, "Ray, calm down, it's just an estimate, book what you want." I said, "Okay, the stress has gone there." But we used a fewer number of students than what we had. All this is based off 2018 numbers, milk sales, milk served and stuff like that. They always go back more or less two years because it's the last completed year that we added. So everything kinda stayed the same, there wasn't any shock. The amount that I'm budgeting to transfer from county to that program was about 1,000 dollars last, it was from 224,000 to 223,000. So I made when I did that, I was close to having a really accurate budget model. One thing I included in child nutrition, we've had many conversations about this and how to do this, I put a refrigerated box truck in there, about 80 grand. So John is in the process of trying to figure out how we can do that, there's a few stipulations, you know, and you talk to some of these dealers that got state contracts, do you buy chassis and then buy a box or can you buy them all together? And so they're working with him on how to do that. So hopefully sometime after July 1, we'll put a bid out for that and then, so can have been done by then. Excuse me.
Let me ask about that now. The cost for that truck, is that coming out of child nutrition funds?
Well, you have to have a match with child nutrition. Most, a lot of people don't realize it, but it's not really state money we use to fund that. I mean, it's really, when you look at all the different codes, all the revenue codes, it is all, well, I got it here somewhere. It's all federal money. We get very little state aid on that. It's like, you know, 17,000, 20,000 dollars, it's real money. But you have to have a county match. So months ago, I talked to Tony Craga, I said, "Hey, I wanna buy a truck." You know, they're talking about buying a truck, "I need to know how that's gonna affect my budget and what happens." He goes, "Well, you gotta have a county match, you know, a certain percentage." He said, "That would just be included in your county match." So how he calculates that and what percentage of that kinda is really reimbursed by anybody, I'm not real sure. I don't think any other would, but it would go towards our county match. And when they run those programs, they just look at that project code, see how much money you spent. And then I think they just take, you know, you get certain federal money for every milk served, certain federal money for every milk served. When it comes to a box truck, they're gonna look at that and I don't think they're gonna reimburse us anything, so it'll just be part of our match. And even with that calculated in, I still had the same transfer from general to child nutrition, which is that match.
So is it true that the majority of that money will be from the federal monies or from child nutrition?
Yeah, I was amazed when I started this job, I didn't understand that completely because I didn't do the budgets and I didn't do the revenues for child nutrition. So when I started doing the budget the first time and we started coding money, it was coming in during the course of the year, everything's coded to 04651, 04621 and 04s are always federal money. So, I mean, everything is coded, "I wish I, I had a copy of that budget." I know I had one on my desk because I was actually gonna attach it to the back just so you could see that.
Oh, that's okay, I'll just...
But it's federal money. I mean, there's very little state aid that comes in on that child nutrition budget or, you know, throughout the course of the year. So that's pretty much the budget. I changed a few things. On the expenses, I tried to keep everything the same, you know, some things fluctuated that state gave me, like retirement numbers and things like that. Very little I changed with regard to transportation and maintenance and things like that. Tried to just, I just didn't wanna change and that's exactly why I had to use that 291,000. I used, you might've missed that part where I brought over 2 million dollars as a carryover. I just went ahead and did that off the top and then I used 291 of that and I said, "I'm gonna balance the budget with this and I'm gonna put a million seven in contingency." If, I would've made those changes and spent that time, you know, that's why I used that. I just didn't wanna go through and cut fuel more and cut all these, you know, repairs and all that. Because in the end, I always tell them, "If you need it, we'll buy it. If you gotta have something and it's June 15th, we'll buy it, we'll find money somewhere." So I just didn't wanna, I didn't wanna, you know, spend that. So, I just didn't wanna, I didn't wanna, you know, spend that. I could, I could've cut everything, but I just chose not to. But that's pretty much the expenses. On the revenue side, what, what we've talked about, what you see is our regular levy and our excess levy are not gonna live up to what we thought. What I found by doing research and going back into, uh, previous years, and I think I got a spreadsheet going back to like fourteen, fifteen, thirteen, fourteen. As the levy estimates come down and the collections come down, some of the other stuff that's built off of those levies goes up. And I never really raised those numbers before. I think this year, um, like right now, our regular excess levy, for 2019, I budgeted a three point, you don't, you don't have this information. I budgeted a three point two eight six million. We've collected three point, well, just a little over three million. We are not gonna hit that budget in the mail. That's, we're $200,000 down. June, May, I said, June, July, because July goes back into June. Our, looking back, the few years that I can, their collections are terrible. They're just, they're sub what we receive all the other months. They're just below average. So, there's no way we're gonna hit that budget. With regular levy, we budgeted two point seven million. We collected two point five million, two point five five. We're not gonna hit that number. We're not even gonna get close. Okay? With the levies comes some other stuff, supplemental, um, excess levy supplemental funds, regular levy funds, supplemental funds, prior year payments, which last year was really high. We had that conversation. Well, this year it's not quite as high as what it was last year. It's, that was like a fluke. It went up and it's come back down. A lot of those that I budgeted kinda carried what was done two years ago. They've exceeded the budget. But they're not exceeding it enough to make up the difference in the two big categories, which is regular levy and excess levy. But whenever I did the budgets this year for 2020, I went ahead and I raised those to what I expected them to be simply because our levies have dropped again. So, I figure some of these categories are probably gonna raise. So, I tried to match them with what I anticipated this year revenues would be in those categories. Whereas before, I kinda left them. That's really the only thing I changed on the revenue side. I kept everything else, estimates for miscellaneous income and, um, taxes receivable, things like, you know. There was a couple of other small categories that I just kinda kept them the same. But the stuff related to the levy, I raised them just, and it's minor. You're, you're going for $20,000, $25,000. Some of them went from five to $10,000. But I kinda grabbed that money where I thought it could help balance the budget. So, with that being said, I think the, I might as well go ahead and tell you this. I thought about doing a monthly update, calling it good, the bad and ugly and asking you what you wanted first. But the cash this year, right now, we're about seven or eight hundred thousand dollars lower than where we were last year as of this date. And I finished kinda strong at five point two, but what scares me is that cash comes from Fund eleven, Fund forty-one, Fund sixty-one, and I've been asking for federal money along the way simply because the way the state auditor's forced to issue. It's really difficult to wait months and months to do that, you know. And sometimes I would do that if I, if I was sitting on several million dollar, I didn't worry about it. Well, this year I just stayed worried about it and I just kept asking for money. So, I've got a lot of the federal money that normally won't come in till next year. So, to be seven or eight hundred down kinda, kinda worried me. And I can't remember what I finished at last year. Maybe three point three million. So, if you take eight hundred thousand of that, you know, we're two point five. It's kinda below the finish of the year. We're not gonna collect a lot in, in June and July. And, you know, cash is not where, it's okay, but it's not where I want. Because you look at cash, you can't look at today. You have to look at two months from now and what's going out and what changes. So, it's not where I wanted it to be. I think at one time last year, I was closer to $6 million around this time of year. And I'm not there. So, collection's gonna be down. From the levy budget to what we collected, we're just under $400,000 below what that budget is. So, we're not gonna make that happen. So, keep that in mind as you look, as you read through your budget numbers.
Pay raise, uh, that does not affect substitute costs, does it? Or doesn't?
Well, here's what they did. When they gave us that option, hey, you can just take estimate $2 million, I think is what they said, and stick it in a contingency and then divvy it up later. You know, you need to show that raise. Or you can go ahead and make salary schedules and spread it out. They gave us a preliminary state aid formula and it came to, on the part that's in Fund eleven, it came to $17,360,000. Then they said, listen, if you're putting it into your budget, you're gonna go ahead and do the twenty-one fifty and the eleven fifty, or twenty-one twenty and eleven fifty for every employee. You gotta add this to your state aid computation. And they gave us an extra $790,000. So, that gave me a new state aid formula. Let's get our budget in here because my state aid number is, um, eighteen million and ninety-two thousand is what I used, which is 790,000 higher than their initial state aid formula because they said, here's your two percent. Where they stuck that at, they gave us $17,804 for professional subs. And so, service subs. So, they increased that by almost $18,000. They also increased that for regular salaries, which is Step one, service salaries, which is Step two, and then for fixed costs that we're gonna increase because of, you know, the increase for your regular employees. So, they gave us $17,800 for substitutes. Is that gonna cover it? I don't think so. Uh, when you look at our expenses in, in, in our substitute costs, they're just, if I were to budget for that, I would, Jeff would get tired of hearing from me on the weekends.
Well, no one comes near that. What the state.
No, I mean, the state will give you $500,000 for subs that cost us a million five. If we didn't have to pay subs, we would be sitting on a pretty carryover. Yeah.
Well, that's where every county is.
Yeah, it's, it's just amazing. So, uh, they, they don't give you money to cover subs. I mean, you might as well not have it. It's that little compared to what we actually spent. So, we've done some research on that last year. And even then, we were kinda shocked at how high it was. So.
Well, I've practiced about for years.
Shocked Fred all the time.
Well, it.
Instead of shocked you all the time.
Oh, yeah. I mean, it's unbelievable how much it costs for substitutes.
Well, if somebody were to go back and change a state aid formula and they talked about doing that, I think the first thing they'll look at is that substitute cost because that's where you lose your excess levy. That's where it goes.
Well, they need to put in the pay raise. You've got a ten, nine, seven, time where you get five percent. If you only ten, seventy percent, you get two percent pay rate. They could fix it up there.
One of the things they are proposing, not whether it help or not, is that you would, uh, have to earn your sick days each month before you use my, was that still in there, Jeff?
There's some, there's some conversation about that, maybe a separate bill. I don't think it's part of the, the big education package that I've seen.
From the private sector, that's the way it is.
Whether that would make any difference, I don't know.
Well, it has some incentivizing in there, Bill.
Yeah, if you don't use the days, you get $500 or something like that. They're changing personal days from three days to four days.
Will, and it may make a little difference, but does that, I don't think. Okay, Ray, keep going. I'm sorry.
Well, that, that's kinda it. Uh, some of the things have changed. I changed coaches' pay. I increased that. I had to manually go in and do that because you don't calculate that through HMS and EMS. That's something you have to do. That was quite an increase. Trying to say, I don't think there's really anything that's shocking or that sticks out. Every, the process went really smooth this year. I literally cut down. You wouldn't believe how many less hours I worked on this because last year when I was having trouble and restarting, I was thinking, how do I make this simpler? For some reason, I was able to remember everything I thought of. And when this year came, I told, I told Mr. Mickey, I said, this is a stress-free budget this year. You're not gonna be getting those phone calls. I said, and this is what I'm doing. And, uh, and I, I'm not sure what personnel was, I don't think I started on it till maybe the twenty-fourth of April or something like that before I could really felt comfortable running. I'd done a lot of the preliminary calculations to see what my state aid was gonna be and all the, I figured up all my revenue numbers on spreadsheets, but I never input anything into the budget until I was sure the personnel was correct. When personnel was correct, then I started bringing over the other information I wanted, started plugging in the revenue numbers. I got it really close. I had one scared. I thought we were about a million dollars off. I thought, how do I go through, cut a million dollars out of this budget? I said, I'm gonna have to talk to Jeff. But I started looking. And remember I told you that $790,000 that they gave us if we were gonna calculate the salaries into the budget? Well, I forgot to add that into my revenue numbers. You know, so that saved me $800,000 of stress right there. But, uh, it went, it went really well. I think whenever I give this to the state, uh, the first year, they had no findings whatsoever. This is my third budget. Last year, the only thing they wanted me to change, I forgot to put a category on there, which was like $5,600. And they wanted me to add $2 million to the revenue and stick it somewhere. So, this year, um, I think I've got all my expenses in there because I made sure I matched that up and I went ahead and put the $2 million in. So, we'll see. I'll turn this in, you know, if everything's okay and you approve it. Probably tomorrow I'll submit it with the state. I just gotta send it via Weevus by hitting a few buttons. And then I'll send them notes on things that I know that they look for. I've kinda figured that out. And there's not a whole lot this year. I don't have to explain a lot of stuff that I did on fuel or anything like that, but I've got a few. And I'll send that up there with the budget. Right after I hit send, I'll, I'll send an email and hopefully explain anything that causes them to have a red flag. But that's it in a huge nutshell.
Do I have any questions or do you have any else? Just a couple things, just to clarify now. So, from the county end, both our regular and excess levies are down in revenue.
Yeah, we don't have a chance. There's no way possible.
Well, just to, so the, uh, the excess levy, of course, is for five years. And then that, or delineated how much we're gonna spend in various categories.
Yeah, that's, I got that on worksheet here.
Right. But they are all premised on the idea you're gonna acquire X amount of dollars each year. But if you don't get that, then you may decrease your excess levy to meet the actual amount. So, you can decrease some of those designated items.
Yeah, that's the way it's written, just so you can do that.
I mean, you aren't bound with something if you don't get enough revenue to cover it. So, going back, I guess that's this sheet right here I was looking at. Now, is this, do you have to do, so you were $68,000 plus, uh, less than the excess levy than what was anticipated in the call, right?
Yeah, everything that we did on the, when we did the, the levy election was based off our previous year's, um, numbers from the accessory's office.
Right. So, it, since those numbers were down, you had to adapt this, right?
Yeah. We, we said when we had that meeting, we had that, we, we adopted all those numbers and we've had to cut them.
Okay. Now, the one, as we go down through here, you had to cut $68,000. The major improvements went from $250,000 to $50,000. Major improvements is one of the categories, obviously. And that could be for a number of things, I take it?
Yeah, I mean, one of the reasons why we did that, we increased that was because we knew we were gonna do some work on the schools with the gym, from the gym floors and some other projects we had in mind. When you look at this and this, you gotta think, over the last four or five years, this keeps getting cut. And these, these objects, these categories keep getting cut because I think last year I had to cut $233,000. The year before that, it was like $175,000. We're gonna be operating over this next five years about a million dollars lower than what you were five years ago. You know, how do you keep doing that? I don't, I don't know. Well, you have to figure out where your positions are, cut those, you know, your external positions and you have to be frugal and hot people and state projects and, you know, to cut the personnel costs. So, when it comes to that, that looked like, when I look at all these other categories, you can't really do that. You don't wanna take textbooks. You don't wanna take pencils out of kids' hands, you know. You can't do that. This is the only thing that we could do that really doesn't affect people. If you take teachers' money away from them, that hurts. You take textbooks away, that hurts somebody. You know, you really wouldn't take textbooks away. You'd have to find another way to buy them and supplies and things like that. So, you know, you can't get rid of that stuff. You gotta keep buying it. So, where do you take it from? Well, major improvements is something, if we got a project, maybe we can put something off of here. So, we cut from there.
Just clarifying then. Okay. Does anybody probably recalls, uh, back of, I don't remember the exact date, but a month or so ago, we had, uh, put our preliminary budget out for review, right?
Yeah, then we put the levy, the levy number, yeah, they were down.
So, now we're at the point of, uh, actually adopting the budget that reduced me to the state farm.
Yeah. And I had those levy numbers in there and, uh, and I think it's in, right behind the, the two page budget number.
So, we're at the point now of turning it in and hoping you don't get a bunch of emails?
Yeah, I think we could. I don't, I don't anticipate a lot. I didn't anticipate it to only have $2 million last year or so.
All right. Uh, if anybody has anything else, then we appreciate it, Ray. We don't go anywhere. At least not yet. All right. Thank you very much. And I'm glad it's getting a little bit easier each year.
Well, yeah, I mean, I just, you gotta do what you gotta do.
Okay. Uh, that concludes the presentations we had. Let's go to the administrative section. I have a motion to look at those items.
I move.
Ms. Smith?
Second.
And Ms. Brooks. Just for the record, Carol Smith is now within the team and she's been here for a few minutes. If you want to interrupt, Ray, whatever you can help with, if anybody wanted to note them. Okay. Ms. Pickett?
All right. Item A, school volunteers who on occasion may also service buschaf rooms for athletic events, academic competitions or school outings and have completed volunteer orientation. Item B is a contract with Dr. Casey Lawson to provide evaluation for Lincoln County Twenty First Century after-school programs according to the terms of the contract.
Okay, so all the two items. Anybody have any questions about either one of those? If not, is that an all yes vote?
Yes.
All, all yes vote. Okay. Can I have a motion to look at the finance items? I'm, Mr. Curry?
Second.
Ms. Smith? Say again.
Um, A, schedule of invoices totaling $248,581.92. As always, those are attached. If you have a question, let me know. And B, adoption of the Lincoln County Schools' proposed budget levy estimates for fiscal year of nineteen twenty, nineteen and twenty in compliance with West Virginia Code eighteen-nine B dash six.
Okay, that's what we just talked about. Those are available in the finance office. If anybody wanna, okay. Okay. Are any questions? Is that an all yes vote on the finance items?
Yes.
All yes on that. Well, let's look at the personnel schedule, please. Motion, please?
I move.
Second.
Fred and Ms. Brooks and the second is that one. Bill?
Item A, appointment of short, long-term substitute special personnel. Item B, appointment of substitute service personnel. Item C, retirements and resignations. We have a postie going down the bar. I know some of the teachers, uh, principals will probably want to interview. So, if it's okay for the teacher part, I may bring a revised schedule to the floor. If not, it would be June eighteenth, is that, whatever it is, we wanna keep that rolling if we can.
Starting early, aren't you?
Well, and then included in that posting is the principal. She's a president. We, we, I don't anticipate that I'm gonna be able to bring a recommendation to you next week, but, uh, it looks like what's gonna probably be next Tuesday before there's any interviews.
That's right.
So, I, I would think it's gonna be that second morning in June before I can get you the name. All right. How many applicants?
We have five in camp.
Five all in camp.
But it doesn't close until four o'clock in the morning, not four o'clock in the morning, I guess.
I think Mr. Fong even may have to ask that question.
Thank you for that. That's just for one person only.
Wanna ask that, Jim?
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, I guess it'll be all right for the body to see that, Bill. Yeah. Okay. Uh, is that an all yes on the personnel schedule as presented?
Yes.
All right. Let's go down to comments concerned. Four members, if you may, have anything? Ms. Smith, give everything I want to talk about. Who's different? There's one right there. Got something else? Okay, not then. Uh, we do have one other item on the, uh, the agenda. And that's the discussion of the, regarding a possible person of property. discussion of the, regarding a possible person of property, uh, if it's the board's, uh, if you choose to do that, uh, this should be something we do in executive sessions that's concerned, uh, a person of property, why would it push a motion? We go into executive session at one fifty-one, it's gonna be, so, move. Can Ms. Smith make that motion, Mr. Wilkerson second to that, at one fifty-one? Okay, is that an all yes vote?
Yes.
All right, board is down to executive session.